We are going to resume our meeting and we are at 5.3. Okay, so hopefully everybody kind of thought about the whole Fairview thing over lunch. We are going to go to our speakers list and just kind of get where everybody's feelings are at here first. Justy Dick, you are number one.
Oh, no. Uh, well, I don't kind of forgot that conversation. Um, I'll, I'll come back.
You're okay. Uh.
Okay. Yeah, all right.
Uh, trying to remember.
Justy Reed.
Um, so now it's your personal.
My personal?
Yeah.
Okay, so I think we did a good job putting out there an opportunity for feedback for the public. And I also think it would be a missed opportunity not to update our capital plan for the September 30th. Um, chance just because the things, most of the things that we have on our current capital plan, we've already been met, which was the funding for value scoping. And also I think it's timely that we want to move this forward so that we can actually use that value scoping money that we were granted before the opportunity gets missed. So I think we want to move this along. So, um, going off of the feedback and off of the information that we've accumulated through this discussion, which has actually gone on for a couple of years now because of the initial value scoping. And I know, understand that changes have happened, but it also gave us a huge advantage that that conversation's been rolling for a while. And, um, it's, everybody kind of is aware of it now. So I would, my suggestion is that we move in favor of what the feedback is telling us, that we propose a K to 12 school, a new K to 12 school in Fairview. As would be my first topic, and if not, then the second option, option number two is a minimum seven to 12 and a moderate range to K to six. Mine, okay, news.
Okay.
You got it?
Okay. Uh, Justy Rushton, do you have anything else to add?
Oh, sure, absolutely. Um, it wasn't my understanding that our conversation with the premier would have happened if we weren't going to be partnering with Holy Family Catholic Division. And I thought that, Madam Chair, I thought that you and I had talked about that. And you said that, um, you know, after Holy Family, you said to us that they didn't want to partner, that it was less urgent for us to get our capital plan changed and have a, you know, moving forward. My thoughts all along were that if we were to do what our capital plan says now, which we could have been doing since March, we got the money to do value scoping and we could have done that, then we would have been more prepared to make a decision. I've heard earlier today that, um, the feeling of the two trustees that were at the town, uh, the meeting with the town and the, um, premier thought that she really wanted to get, um, something from us in, in, in a, in a building sense, like what were we looking to do in Fairview so that they might be able to speed things up? I didn't get that feeling at all. If that is the case, then, you know, moving forward with something in Fairview at this time might be, um, worth looking at. I, I would not support a K to 12 school and the majority of the people that I talked to in Fairview don't support it, uh, for, for many, many, many different reasons. Um, if, if we built a K to 12 school, um, what would we do with a community gym that's rented out 294 days a year? You can't rent that gym unless you book it two years in advance, even if you're in the school there, right? So the K to 12 school would take that option away from us. I mean, I know there's opportunities to talk about that. And I also think that if we decided to go to the K to, K to 12 school and, um, you know, put it over on the Fairview High School site, the town and the MD might look down on that because now we're leaving them with a gym and a, and a commercial kitchen that kind of belongs to all three of us. So, um, my first preference right now would be to move forward with value scoping in a very, you know, timely manner. And the next opportunity for us to present new buildings or modernizations or whatever we wanted to do would be in March. If this, if the decision is made, there's kind of a couple of decisions. If the decision is made by the majority of this group, that that's not where we want to go and we definitely have to make a decision to change our capital plan to promote something, then we'll talk about that when that time comes. I think your two decisions would be made, right? Like, if we're going to move forward with, if the majority of the board says we're going to move forward and change our capital plan to do something in Fairview and Trustee Reed said that, you know, that you do a K to 12 or we do this. So if the motion is made and passed that we're going to move forward from our current capital plan and change things, then we'd have to talk about what that is.
I, I just see clarity on that. You're, so right now you're saying don't change the capital plan for September 30th?
That would be my preference, yes. That we have, we have six months.
Okay.
To, to work on this and then put something that the community is supportive of and, uh, that fits in the community. And we've got a chance to talk to the other partners and other stakeholders over the value scoping. Like we said, we were going to do prior to making a decision for education in our current capital. But there's two decisions, I think, I think.
All right, Justy, you're on.
Sure. So, no, thank you. So there's one, the second bullet on page 16 of the report, if you go there, there's one comment that caught my, my view. And, uh, that may be some time, thank you, you know, we had, once again, discussing a personal matter here, but something that can simply be, if, if it's been a board-related topic, we're chatting. So what this point says, it says a real survey should have been emailed with enrollment this year to get a true start of what the community would like to see. So if our voice to depict what the people, the people that in Fairview and the folks who live there want, that can, that can be approached, you can send, send a report out and a survey out. And then we have, the body is instructed based on the return of this survey, right? Instead of us sitting here and, you know, voicing our personal opinion. And sometimes we might harm people, you know, to think that are not even being asked for. Right, so that's a quick comment I wanted to make.
Anything else, sir?
Uh, so I want to know, how do we respond to that? Are we interested in making a survey or, you know, to know what people want? Because we're spending way too much time on this topic, of, we're wasting my time.
Okay, I, I would disagree with that. Like, this is a big decision that we have to make that would be the future of Fairview and, and our school, our, our education system there. So I don't think that there's too much time to be spent on that. We need everybody to be comfortable making their decisions. Um, uh, can we, I want to table that question. I do want to answer that, but I want to make sure that we get everybody else's, um, input on it because I just don't want to veer off into another conversation until everybody else has stated their, their opinions on what they feel on the report. Um, but yeah, we'll definitely come back to that one. Um, was there anything else, comments about the report?
No, last thing, what drives, no, that's, that's mainly that question.
That question, that's my big question.
Okay.
Okay.
Um, Justy Pukinski.
I'm really confused. I'm going to be honest. I don't know. I don't think there's a right answer. Um, I felt through this whole process, sometimes we were rushing because we felt like we had to jump on this Holy Family head to rush. I don't know how much more we're going to get out of the family school, but we did want to, two years ago, we've done some engagement. We're never going to make everyone happy. Like, I think if you asked Manning right before the school started, no one would have wanted a K to 12. But just because we don't know how we're getting help works doesn't mean, like, I think everyone is fine with it now. Um, I don't want to rush into changing things because then I, then I don't want to change it again in March because then it just looks like we don't have a clue, which honestly, I don't understand at this point what Fairview needs and, and of course, what they want. Um, so I'm kind of very perplexed at this point. I thought I knew coming into this meeting where I was at, but now I'm more on a sudden.
Um, I want to loop back around to Justy Dick in Giesberg.
I, uh, I agree. I think that, I think the worst thing we can do is rush into it. But, uh, I think we need to take more time and have a clear vision of what Manning or Fairview wants from us. I don't think we're there yet. And, uh, Red, Red Earth's any education might be stuck in there for your waiting anyway, but, uh, it doesn't matter. I just, I just think the decision we make needs to be what the majority of the people up there want. Not sure we have that consensus yet. So I think that we need to spend more time communicating with them, uh, getting more feedback from them, more, a little bit more, uh, for meetings or whatever, surveys, whatever we need to do. But I don't think we have a good, clear idea of what they actually want up there. And until we do, there's no point in wasting the time or the money to, to get there. We need to take the time to, uh, talk to them. Get surveys and whatever else is needed to, but to meet with them is important too. So, yeah, I don't think we're there yet.
Hey, is there anything else to add?
I guess I'm going to end with all of this, though. I don't know if I have much to add, but I guess to David's point, um, if you feel uncomfortable yet that everyone is represented here, I would agree with him, I guess, with, um, waiting. Um, so I guess, just for my clarification, so normally this gets updated at the end of March because of the meeting with the premier, that's kind of why this, sorry, go, sorry.
Yeah. No, there's two things. The premier said, tell me what your ask would be. And then she said, when could you let me go by? And we responded with, at the soonest September 30th.
Okay.
But September 30th is also the regular date that we can amend our capital plan. So we make a capital plan in March, which is what we have right now. And then in September 30th, you can update that capital plan. And then announcements from the province generally come at the beginning of the year before March.
Okay.
So, like, the new school announcements are going to come before our capital plan would be rebuilt, right? So this is just an opportunity to update it, to change it from what we already have submitted before those announcements.
Okay.
And that's every September 30th.
Until October the 15th, you have that, that window, right?
Yeah, it's just, we don't have a board meeting until after.
No, I'm just saying, you, you don't have forever and ever. You, after September 30th, you have, from September 30th to October the 15th, to update your capital plan and give reasons why you did that, right?
Right, okay. Two chances per year to put your say.
Yes. Okay. So right now you would feel uncomfortable updating it at all? Or you just think that there's a lot not to be done before October 15th or whatever to be able to update it?
I would feel that everybody would be represented if we stayed with our current capital plan, which states that we're going to find a solution for education in Fairview by going through value scoping session with the partners and people in the community. Uh, then, because I, I feel that on, uh, August the 21st in our meeting, we said, oh, well, geez, we better get out there and talk to the folks at Fairview. We did all that. And then all of a sudden, now we're making a decision based on, um, you know, 50 people showing up to a meeting. Um, and I, I think once again, we would be rushing that. And I, and I know there's people that don't think that. And I know that there's, there's a need for new schools in the division and things like that. In Fairview, I think we'll be quite well to get by and make a decision in March and, and stick with it. But.
Does you have anything else? I guess, yeah, just my thought, just looking up at the overall quantitative, um, data. It seems like, that 3.6 and the 3.1, they seem fairly close. Like, my first thought when I looked at this, it's looking, looks like it's still quite divided or undecided. It's not a very strong either way. So I guess it might be good to get a strong feel, like, this is definitely the overall, and I don't know how to achieve that, if there's different things that could still be done to see if there's that one, um, particular preference that would come out stronger than, a lot stronger than the other two. But I hope that helps.
I wanted to actually ask your opinion.
Oh.
Is all I wanted to do.
Madam Chair, a couple of points. One, um, I've been involved in a lot of school closures and school constructions. And I've never been involved in a value scoping where you get consensus. You wouldn't, it would never happen unless you have this.
Except the last one.
Except, yeah, except the consensus would be, generally when you're looking at a school in a town, the dominant, and that's why the results were a little bit surprising. The dominant results are almost always a K to six and a seven to 12. Because the people who show up for the meetings are the kids, parents who have kids in K to six and seven to 12, and they want two separate schools. So a critical question for the board is this. Um, um, and what is the likelihood of getting funding to build two new schools? Because I think the board has to look at the fact that really neither two schools there are long-term solutions. Neither of them are. They're in excellent shape, but they're very old infrastructure, 60 to 65 years old, where a couple of episodes away from being into a catastrophic financial decision potentially if something goes south in those buildings. They are old buildings, well-kept buildings. And so I think moving forward, the board's got to try to get its head around, okay, so what is it that's in the best interest of educational services in the town, but also in the best interest of the, for the financial integrity of the organization moving forward? And so if it was a time when there was a good likelihood you could pay lots of money, uh, you'd build a seven to 12 new school and retrofit the K to six, perhaps if it was able to be modernized. But I think when you start looking at modernization, you're going to, there's going to be major challenges at huge expense, huge expense in modernizing schools. And of course, the organization has a lived experience about that. It was interesting at the town meeting that the town of Fairview wants a K to 12 school. The town of Fairview is in favor of a K to 12 school because that's where all of the students can congregate. Or as, um, the CAO said, the vast majority of the students could be congregated and then they can build their community infrastructure and get high usage. The MD of Fairview doesn't want it. And the reason they put forward on us, I misunderstood, was because there's a school that's a joint-use school, E. Oliver. Well, you see, I don't think that is even, should even be a factor in the decision-making because if the board decided, which I think ultimately, no matter how much value scoping or consultation that gets done, in the end, there's only going to be, if you ask my professional opinion, there's only one pathway forward here for the long-term integrity of the organization and meeting the financial, the educational needs within the community. It's a brand-new K to 12 school. That is the only solution here that makes any sense whatsoever. Now, let's, and we can consult, the board can consult all it wants. You'll always get a split because, because you're going to be meeting parents where they are. If their kids are in kindergarten and grade one, they do not want a seven to 12 school. If they're in grade five or six, well, hey, not so bad in that they have no more children coming along. Reality is, K to 12 schools work very, very well, especially when they're designed through value scoping in a way that separates out the K to six from the seven to 12. The Wemshaw Public Ward is not a good example of it. And the reason being, a good example of the separation, the schools were built on existing infrastructure, right, community infrastructure and their, and, and two schools were built at the same time. Um, to the E. Oliver Joint Use Facility, I don't think that should factor into the decision at all for the board, if you ask my professional opinion. Because if the board decided to go forward after they got all the feedback with a K to 12 school, the E. Oliver school can still be snobbied as a community space. The town of Fairview and the MD can still use it. It could be partially demolished and they could maintain that infrastructure, keep the extra gym and so on. So the piece that came up from the MD, um, to me, I, I was surprised about it. For one, I was actually really surprised about it. That, I, I was like, holy crap. Because we had had the conversation with the town of Fairview and they were very clear that what makes sense is one brand-new state-of-the-art K to 12 school. Um, so I think, um, you know, and I'm not saying, by the way, you need to rush, that's your decision. All I'm saying is that in the end, unless there's going to be big pots of money that we don't know about, there's one solution for Fairview. You, even if you went forward with a modernization of a new seven to 12 school, my sense is that when the, the detailed work is done, it's going to come back and say that it's not feasible in all likelihood to modernize the school, the, the E. Oliver school. And the modernization, um, modernize, like David mentioned earlier today, that there was a school in the province that was at 50% utilization and got modernized without reduction in space. Um, there's obviously a set of circumstances around that that would, that resulted in that. Clearly, they're not going to knock down the gym because the cost of doing so is, uh, is prohibitive. But there would be, if, if a school is substantially underutilized, uh, there's a real good chance that it will shrink, the footprint will shrink if the school is feasible. So I believe that there's only one solution, um, because in the end, it's going to be driven by finances. Um, and, uh, a strong, um, the board is going to be strongly compelled to say, hey, we've got to do something because buildings are getting older. And whenever the board makes this decision, we're six, seven, eight, perhaps, years away from it being, uh, materializing. So that would be my sense of it. I, I think the, the MD's concern about E. Oliver, no doubt, that's a legitimate concern for them. But I think there's a good pathway forward that allows that not to be a worry area for them and not impede whatever it is the board decides to do. And I think that if the board moves forward with a, a redeveloped K to six school, a modernized K to six school and a seven to 12 school, we won't, the board won't be too far down the road before that pivots into a K to 12 school because it's not going to be deemed to be a feasible thing to do, perhaps. That's my read on it. But maybe there's a conversation at the upcoming, uh, meeting with the, uh, with the MLAs. I know Tom Lawan is not there, but like, what, where are things with regard to government funding and building schools? I, I believe that the window, here's the other last thing I'll say, Madam Chair. I actually do believe that the meeting in Fairview wasn't an accidental meeting. It was a meeting whereby a door of opportunity was opened for Peace Rivers School Division to bump it up on the list. Because it's known that there's old community infrastructure. So whether the politicians were, this chatter, the Catholic board got a new school, K to 12, what's happening with the Peace Rivers School Division? A window of opportunity exists that if, uh, the right ask was made, that it, the Peace Rivers project gets bumped up for approval. It still may be a year or two out, but that's my own thought on it. Otherwise, why is the premier intervening in that kind of way? Uh, there's obviously a motivation, conversations occur during close, go somewhere along the way. And it wasn't an accident that, from what I gather, I wasn't there, but somebody whispered to people on the way out, two, three, three new schools are not in the picture. You need to ask for a grade, a kindergarten, grade 12 school. That's because conversations have been had and I would say no decision's made. People are, there are people working in government looking at, we're all in the new giant of province, community by community. And because it's, it's a denominational system, Catholic and, and, and public, they want to be where, where they can be seen as, as equitable in providing supports. That's my read on it. Um, I'm not saying you don't continue to consult. I think the next stage of consult, consultation would be with the value scoping piece. But the board, I think, would be well within its right, if it chooses to do so, say, we're going forward with this ask for our community, whether it's a modernized K to six and a new seven to 12 or a new K to 12. And we're going to consult, uh, in an intense kind of way with the community to decide what that looks like. That's just my view on it.
No, and I guess, uh, for myself, that was kind of, that's where I go on things, is listening to, um, like, our superintendent has a lot of history with new schools and stuff like that, that a lot of us at the table just don't have that experience, right? So when you're looking at that, when we go to the meeting and we have somebody who says, your best bet is to ask for a K to 12, when, um, that's how I see it with the meeting with the, with the premier, was as a door being opened where, okay, get me your ask, what do you want? Um, that's how I can envision, okay, we, we come up, whatever the ask is, we come up with our ask, we present it to, to her by the end of the month, and then maybe we're on the announcements come the new year, right? Like, that's a possibility. Um, when it comes to space, I would rather err on the, the side of caution because from the time I've been here, it's always been communicated that when you do a modernization and you're under your, your capacity, you are always at risk of losing space. And I would rather say to people that we are at a risk, risk of losing space than to say, no, we're not, and then lose space when they do modernize, right? Um, but I think that, that's kind of the platform that the premier has been on for a while is the, under a thousand students is a small school to them, right? When they're looking at what's going on in the cities and stuff like that. So they want to compact as much as they can. And there's only going to be so much longer that we're going to be able to support two schools under 70% capacity. Like, we're seeing that in a number of our schools that we're already struggling with. So I don't know, I, I would be, like, I definitely understand where, where other concerns are coming from. And, and I guess I had a very much different, uh, experience at the meeting because a lot of the parents that I spoke to were very much in favor of the K to 12. Um, but I'm not from Fairview, so I definitely don't have, um, my finger on the pulse like, like, uh, the local trustee would. Um, but my, I would be in favor of the K to 12. Just how, seeing how it's played out everywhere else and what is going to be on the shoulders of the division in the next coming years.
Madam Chair, I just say one other thing. Whatever board decision the board makes, the team here, obviously the administrative team will work hard to support whatever needs to be done. So I just wanted to say.
Absolutely, yes, absolutely.
Sure. I think another thing we need to remember, next year is election year for the provinces. Yes, election year next year. So nobody else there trying to satisfy all of us.
Is it next year we're up there?
No, it's 26.
Yeah, it's, it's coming up, for sure.
I do think that, that is about very valid point. If, if there's announcements going to be made, we're not going to get an announcement without having an ask on the table.
Yeah, we have to have an ask on the table. I just want to make sure it's the ask that the majority, I mean, you're not going to please them all, but the majority of Fairview thinks is right for their jumpers.
Fair enough, absolutely.
If I might.
Absolutely, yeah, yeah.
Um, I don't want the folks to think that, I don't believe that a K to 12 school is right for Fairview. I just don't know. There are so many concerns out there that for me, I'm a little tired of making rushed decisions and I want to make sure. And, and what our superintendent said is right, we are not going to get consensus. And I understand that. If we go through all of this and we can alleviate the concerns of the people that are very concerned about a K to 12 school and say, that's the best we can do, sorry, then that's it, and I would support that 100%. Um, when we talk about the town being very much in favor of a K to 12 school, that's basically the CAO and his group think that would work pretty well. The MD, when they were talking about not being in favor of a K to 12, they were talking about their rape pairs. This is what they're hearing from the people that have kids in school in Fairview. Right? So there's just a little bit of difference there. Um.
Yeah, I think that's a broad assumption.
Okay.
I think that's a big assumption, though.
That's what he said. That's what, that's what Felka Lutichak said. Our rape pairs are telling us that they don't want a K to 12 school. That's what he said, so.
But why do you think the town doesn't think it's, that there's something on the?
Well, he never said that, though. He never once said, he said, what Darryl said is the town is in favor of a K to 12 school. Not, not our tax.
Saying that there's room to make an assumption on it.
Okay, and at the, um, at the, uh, meeting in the community, there was a a gentleman there that I've talked numerous times to, and he's got kids in school. And so I asked him, so, oh, you you made your decision? Yeah, absolutely. He says, oh, well, that's really great. He says, yeah, just spend the most money we can, and that's in a K to twelve school. Get the most money in infrastructure in the town that you, as you can do right now. And I thought, well, that's kind of a, kind of a funky way of going about it, right? Um, and I think that that was passed on to more than one person because I talked to somebody I knew quite well. He said, yeah, it kind of makes sense that we get as much as we can right now. And that's a K to twelve school, so we go. That's right. So I don't want our administration or our, my fellow trustees to to think that I don't support the K to twelve decision. At some point in time, that might be my preference. It might be the people in Fairview saying, that makes a heck of a lot of sense. But right now, there's three point six to three point one saying, that's not right. And those fifty people at the meeting, right? So.
Get Lucy in and I have a comment.
Do you think value scoping is going to change any of this?
I do, wholeheartedly.
In what way?
Is because we'll be able to sit down and talk through all of those issues that were were brought up here and and plan a future with the town of Fairview, plan a future with the Northwestern Polytechnic and make sure that that's all going to work. The town with their recreation master plan, they're talking ten years. That's where they're at. They want to have, do something in ten years, so there, there's no rushing getting over to them, I don't think.
But it's not going to change the the rate pairs, the townspeople.
But, but I I think it will. I think that we're going to have, our administrators will probably be a part of that. There's going to be, you know, four or five parents in there that are leaders in the community. And once they understand everything that's going on, then they will be able to talk to their friends and family and say, this is the reason that we're thinking about going down that road. And for myself personally, we, I'm not convinced that we've worked through it all yet. And once the value scoping for me personally is done, then I will be through it and I'll be able to stand behind whatever decision we make, a hundred percent. And I put my head up and say, yep, that's what, that's what came out of the value scoping, then we're going to do it. It's K to twelve, that's great, it's not a something else. And I'd be great to.
Well, not really. Well, and see, and I think that, like, and maybe I'm confused when it comes to the value scoping because I kind of, because the way, when we did the value scoping in Fairview the first time, that one was more of, like, we kind of did the same thing. We kind of walked in with an idea of what we kind of already wanted and then kind of flushed it out. Where that's what I wouldn't expect, like, we kind of need to figure out what we want and then we would sit down and flush out exactly how it's going to pan out, right?
Oh, I'm sorry, but on the fourth or fifth of October in twenty twenty three, I didn't walk in there knowing what was watching. Maybe you guys.
Yeah, that's the difference.
That's, as we said, maybe that was the difference is that the people that were already at the tables, they already had an idea when they went in there.
Right, so you knew that Grand Prairie Catholic was going to give up their high school and we were going to share spaces and and there was line at the college and all that then?
Yeah, a lot of that was conversation that we already had.
The second, the number few thing on our capital plan right now is value scoping in Peace River.
Yeah.
So we would make a decision on the schools in Peace River and what that's all going to look like and then do value scoping? That's, that's my gas blackness to me.
Well. Yeah.
As I say, I don't have to know. Because it was the same with Red Earth Creek, because Red Earth Creek was the same thing. We knew that we were going to build next to the rec center and do all this and that, and then we had like spoken, right?
So the value, yeah, so the, my Madam Chair, yeah, and I think same thing happened in Manning. There was a decision made that, you know, what make the solution that makes sense is a K to twelve screen. Then you do value scoping exercise to look at what that's going to look like. And the value scoping process is what, ten, fifteen, fifteen, twenty people?
Probably, yeah, twenty people.
So two, so out in Fairview, there would be two parents, a representative of the league school council, both principals. Maybe, um, a high school student or two, then divisional staff trustees and Alberta, uh, infrastructure and whoever else at Alberta Education, the consultant. And that's it. So the notion that, I I I would say this, that's what I said earlier when trustee Dick said, you know, it would be good to get consensus. And I said, you know, you're never going to get consensus. Um, and the M D saying that they're hearing from their, uh, rate pairs that they don't like a K to twelve school. Um, that, that in and of itself is interesting. I don't think the 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 guy that made that statement has that information. It's an assumption he's making. And if we, with the value scoping piece, we're still not going to have the rate pairs represented. There's going to be two parents, that's it. There's only going to be two parents in the value scoping and they sat down and looked at. So you could go into a value scoping and say, okay, we went into the one in Fair, in Fairview, we're already having that back channel conversations, knowing where we're heading. I suppose you could go forward with the process and say, hey, we are looking at how we're going to proceed. And coming out that you're open to saying it's going to be a K to six, redeveloped on a new seven to twelve. Or the board decides what makes sense is, whatever that is, whatever you decide. And then you're going forward with the value scoping on, okay, here's what we're asking for money for. This is the decision we've made based on information we have. Now we're going to try to make that the very best school that that has been built in the province thus far. So I guess that's the the piece of it, like, the value scoping, and feel free to, uh, add to that. When we went about, when we went to value scoping in Red Earth Creek, we sat down over two days, um, came to an agreement that we're going to have a new school, it's going to be attached to the community infrastructure. And then from there, drawing started and we moved the process forward, which is typical about that, right?
So, yeah, so that's why I'm just wondering if maybe we're just, I'm like, checking to make sure I'm not confused or whatever, how the value scoping actually plays into here. Because what I was going to say before and back to to trustee Dion's about the survey, I was going to ask, like, roughly, how long do we need to put a survey together? I know, I'm just, I'm asking it. Um, to put a survey together, because ultimately, and I'm like, so I'm just kind of blurring all options here. We're looking at our calendar, we are meeting next Tuesday. We are also meeting on the twenty ninth. So that's what I'm curious about is if, and I know that that's putting it really close.
Before we decide on a survey, if I was someone in attendance at this event and then a survey went out, I would be very insulted. Because I made the time to go and meet with people, ask questions, make a form decision that was all preplanned, notice was given to all of the parents. It would have been shared out, right? If there was interest in that family, when that notice came and they said, oh, I have minor hockey. Hey, mom, would you go for me? Or, hey, my best friend Pat, would you go for me? Because you're also a parent and I can't go, like, let's get this, like, there was, those conversations were going on. I am also a parent. I know those conversations were going on. We got a reasonable amount of people out. Actually, I, in my opinion, we got an excellent number of people out and we had excellent participation by the number of people that were out. You had over eighty percent of your people voting like three times, that's amazing. And if you look at the data in different lights, we have a strong, if you just look at this strongly agreement and agreement lines, there is a strong agreement more to the, to the K to twelve, if you're just looking at those green ones. Neutral, right? That's a really tough one. And then you have your strong disagreements, which seem the same through all three of them, right? So maybe we had seven people who don't like any of our ideas. There's interpretation that can go behind numbers all the time, right? So in my opinion, I would just be hesitant to offend the people who went to the process that we arranged for them, that our staff took lots of time or that we took time to be there, to talk to the people who were interested enough to come at the meeting, hear the information and make the best decision that they can. When it comes further beyond this table, I think the seven of us are the best informed. We are the ones with the political background. For the last eight years, I've been following how this works. I've been, I have participated in value scopings before. I have participated in the value scoping in Fairview informed before we went. Surprised by the results again, went with that, didn't change, partners changed, the whole thing changed. This has been on Fairview's radar now for a couple of years. If they were really interested in this topic, they would have gained the meeting. Not to, just not to, like, say that there's not people that we didn't get to exactly. But any process that we have, we're never going to get a hundred percent participation in, right? You're, you can put a survey out and get less results than this. And in the meantime, it's frustrating to those who attended, right? Uh, I don't feel rushed by this decision because of all of the things that I've said. Um, we've been talking about this for multiple years. We have the funding to do this now. And Peace River is right behind it, but the process is going to look different there. It's a different community. To me, this, this, this event was above and beyond. Because if we went straight to value scoping, we would have even less people in the conversation. So to me, this gives us another tool to take to value scoping to then say, this is why we believe this and this is what we think our people believe in. I think you have to start somewhere and you have to progress. Um, I just, I don't feel rushed. Um, and yeah, so, I mean, I'm going off through the numbers in the, in the greens because I don't feel that they're strongly opposed, like, they're not equally matched in other ways. And I'm seeing that there's thirty nine percent or thirty nine votes for the K to twelve versus the twenty three that are for the modernization of the K to six and the new seven to twelve. So I, I mean, I'm confident in my opinion and I just think we're, we're, um, we've missed opportunity if we don't have something on our capital plan for the spring rush. And, um, to also say that thank you for the funding because we are making progress on it. Rather than just letting it sit when we've been granted our asks already. I think we should show that we're moving along with them. I think that's all I have to say about it. So I'm ready to make a decision.
Okay, I was gonna say.
Can I just clarify?
I was gonna say, if we do one more round quick and then if somebody is ready to make a motion, then.
So what would you say? You would say?
I think we should update our capital.
To say K to twelve with value scoping?
Yes.
So I printed this off a long time ago off of our website, right? And maybe it's changed. I have had it in my briefcase for some time. But it says, since, since the amended capital plan last September, the Peace River School Division has reinstated Fairview as a top priority of the twenty five to twenty eight capital plan. With the evolving education needs of the community, the P R S D board of trustees is requesting a new, is requesting a new value scoping session to determine the best long-term solution for education in Fairview. Right? Am I, am I interpreting that wrong?
I have the twenty five, twenty six pulled up, that number one was preplanning, planning funding for value scoping session in the town of Peace River. So this, so the one you have is before that.
Oh. Anyways, I just, I'm ready to make a decision.
Okay, any other comments?
Where's the dates on?
I don't remember, I've had it in my.
Twenty twenty five to twenty twenty eight.
No, mine says twenty four to twenty seven capital plan.
So there's a new one. The one on the website is this.
This one I've had for a long time.
That was probably, yeah, that was the one ahead. The one, if you want to look, it is, it's linked on the homepage.
And, yeah, you should pull it up.
Okay.
Hey, whatever. Oh, sorry. Well, I'm, I'm just looking at the numbers here, whatever record is worthy, it would have been about a hundred people there in that room that night, it seemed like it. But, uh, but it's saying fifty people voted. I'm wondering, did we have a lot of people that didn't vote?
No, we haven't, it's off. There were fifty five people in attendance.
Vote?
Yeah.
Not, not including us.
Yeah, that's correct.
I just thought it was a lot more seats and, uh, it felt, yeah, it felt like there was more people around and stuff.
Well, we hope, I think, we're lucky to get ten people and we have five hundred.
Yeah, and and.
And then, sorry, index and all, you get a little more, but you're not fair.
And option one got seventy seven percent, right?
Yes.
And option two.
Sixty nine.
Seventy percent of practice is. That's what I'm saying, I mean, yeah, okay, we don't necessarily, to me, this one of the survey was looking for it. And that's, we do with what we have in the population where we're at, and.
Okay, did you have something? Sorry, I'm just a little bit slow in this wrapping, no, no, my head around everything. So right now, the, it says, preplanning funding for a value scoping session in town of Fairview. And we're going to update it to K to twelve with value scoping. So what does that mean, the with value scoping then, if we still keep that in there, like? It means that we're going to, uh, like, engage the community and those our stakeholders in how that's going to play out. Okay, so we have the plan and then we just plan, we have the idea what we want and then we plan on how. It's like the policy and the A P. We're going to decide the policy and then the value scoping decides the A P of the how to.
Would that cost money? So, how many hundred?
Well, we have, we have the money, we were given money for the value scoping already, that was grant money.
The value scoping is more about passing on some of the details and refining some of the things. We're going to take in these comments and say, like, I'm just going to use an example for one that I remember is, um, we want a physical variation between gym spaces, because gym spaces came up a lot, right? And right now, they're counting their two gyms as four gym spaces. Now, I, it took me a while to wrap my head around this. So what they're saying is they have two gyms with walls around them and they have a center divider. So that's how they're counting their four spaces. So that's something that they would really, the way to do that is if we got a two-faced gym and there was a wall down the middle and then you had the dividers, you'd still have four gym spaces. So that's something in value scoping that you're kind of doing negotiations, the give and take of the government. Well, if we could get this wall, we'd give up this closet.
I, I'm, I'm definitely misunderstanding, uh, the two-stage gyms for sure. My understanding is that currently we have a two-stage gym in Fairview at some six hundred and seventy five or so meters. And according to page ninety six in our new capital plan book, if we had six hundred and seventy students, we would have eight hundred and fifteen meters in that same gym, which would give us more seating capacity. But we would have two basketball cross courts, which we currently have. And we would have five hundred and seventy five students instead of two hundred and eighty five in the same gym, right? That's one of the things that I think that before we went to a K to twelve school, I would really need to understand that. Like, eight hundred and fifteen meters is not enough for another gym court.
Yeah.
It's not, so you're going to have the same gymnasium that we currently have. It's just going to be a little bigger, maybe the features are a little more. We would have, there, when you look at that, there's no stage there i- in the capital plan for six hundred and seventy students. There's fifteen classrooms and there's, uh, three science labs and and two inceleries and the gym and some closets and bathrooms. But there's no stage, so I don't, I don't know what the plan would be for, uh, the, the Fairview High School gym right now, we put the curtain down lots of times throughout the day. We have grade seven class on this side of the curtain and the grade seven class on that side of the curtain. And they're doing two different exercises. What happens to your K to six kids when during this nine to three, right?
I know, that's the conversation that happens at value school.
Yeah, but by value scoping, we've already said, we're going to have one gym and it's going to be eight hundred and fifteen meters. So suck it up and live with it, right? That's my point, is that we're, we're making decisions that affect the people in my community without having all of the data. And I think that if we sat down, maybe since last March, we should have been doing this instead of waiting for Holy Family Catholic Division to say, come and partner with us, maybe we should have been hovering this out. Ron just said it was a new capital meeting, or a new capital, uh, manual last week and it took me a while to find it. And then I went through it and that's, if we go with six hundred and seventy, and I'm thinking that's what we do. Because eighty five percent of that is, is what we have for students, right? It's, um, and we're saying, oh, yeah, possibly we could get more shops, especially if we're collegiate. Fairview High School right now has some of the best C T S space in the entire division. We're, we're used to it. I mean, we've got a full shop with welders and carpenter, all the carpenter tools. We have a classroom, we have a full kitchen with four different stoves and, and a whole sewing area. Would we have that at the end of the day? And so we need to rush and make this decision right now. And I know those questions to me are, are pretty important questions and that's what people are talking to me about, like, what would we lose? And I don't know the answer to that, right?
And we think regards to feedback, or?
I, I just think that, like, some of the design things and and configurations, this is a gross area allocation, but that's not what a managed school doesn't look like, the number of classrooms, Red Earth Creek doesn't look like the number of classrooms.
manning school doesn't look like, the number of classrooms, right, or three doesn't look like the number of classrooms in the specs that are given here. So these are the examples. And that's what you work through with the, of value scoping. You're right, there's gonna be one gym, there's gonna be changes to things. But in addition to what we're gonna lose in a school, is how we're gonna be able to continue to pay for the schools, right? Because that's the other side of, of all of this conversation. So I'm not disagreeing with any of the members.
No, I, I, I get that, Ron. I probably understand that better than most people think. Um, for sure, I understand the long-term impact of having a school that's too big for the number of students that you're funded for. I get that. But at the same time, I wouldn't want to see us have a school that's too small to have gym classes for fifty percent of our students.
I know, I know. We have a school in Manning that just opened with the exact same, same situation, right?
With half as many kids, right?
But they're still, they both had full gyms, and they're still have one gym in a much smaller school than this one.
Yeah, it'd be just, my, my response to that would be, how would it look with six-hundred kids as opposed to three-hundred?
It looks.
That's more classes.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, Grimshaw doesn't count, because there are three gyms there.
But they, we wanna use, use back to like that one.
As a safe reason.
That's all, there's two gyms.
Yeah.
Two full gyms, two full-court gyms, not one.
Okay, or I don't, I'm not gonna argue, because I just think we're, sometimes we're saying the same things, not a thing that in value scoping, that's when we work out, whether we're doing modernizations, or whether we're doing new school builds, we work out and put our elbows out for gym space. Like, I heard that clearly from the community, gym space is very important. We are going to talk about gym space when planning this next step. It's whether we're updating the capital plan or leaving it as is. And I just don't think we'll get anything if we don't have something on there. And I think it would be a missed opportunity.
And I would just counter that with, I would rather put nothing there and put something there that's wrong. And I don't know what's right right now, right? So, like, I'm done talking. I've said everything. I can't say anything more to you people. Um, you know where I stand, and make a motion, and we'll vote on it. I'm good.
I know. Any other comments? Any other clarifications?
I, I just wanna add to that, uh, even with the Red Earth School, there was lots of modifications made, where they lost space and whatnot, so they gave up a fair bit to the, through the whole process.
No, because they're a bigger school than what they have.
Yeah. Yeah.
And as it goes up to. I don't know, I'm just, I'm just repeating what teachers.
The school's being built for a hundred-and-seventy-five kids compared to the one that was built for fifty, and they have a hundred kids in it.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I know, we, we got more space than what we actually kind of think should have, like, that's what that actual meeting was, was to advocate for the extra space, because it is a K to twelve.
I'm just repeating what teachers have.
Well, I mean, other people may think, like, they had something in one school that they're not gonna get in another school, and that's gonna feel like a loss.
Yeah.
But then there's also gonna be other opportunities that they, that are like, oh, wow, this is a game. So, I mean, I don't think we can weigh and measure those details, I think. Yeah, I mean, I'm sorry.
I'm done. No, but I was gonna say, and if anybody is comfortable or ready to make a motion.
Well, I would move that we update our capital plan and add a K to, a new K to twelve school in Fairview with values. How do you say, value scoping happening before that?
Um, I would probably say to, uh, continue, continue with the pre-planning process. Because pre-planning in.
You don't have to decide that.
Pre-planning in Oberd Education Language is a whole bunch of things to determine your project.
Right, so I would just like to update it with pre-planning, can we, pre-planning with a new build in Fairview? Does that work? Because I think we need something new there. Like, I think something has to grow.
Well, and I just, whatever it is, it needs to be a clear ask to the government, because that's what she asked for. She asked her, so that's what I.
Okay, I'm going back to.
Pre-planning funding for a new, the, the, I'm not, you choose words, but we're asking for pre-planning funding for a new K to twelve.
We have the pre-planning funding that they're gonna give us. Would it help if I read what pre-planning is, because I knew that said she didn't understand?
Yeah.
So this is two-point-three-point-one in the school capital manual, and pre-planning funding is provided for school projects to support the early identification of future capital needs. Funding through the pre-planning program is intended for projects that are anticipated to increase in priority in the next three to five years, and would benefit from preparatory work. Preparatory work includes value scoping studies to prepare available options, including grade configuration, modernization versus replacement, uh, functional planning, community and stakeholder engagements, and site fit analysis as well. Um, sorry, initial site requirements such as transfer of ownership, ensuring proper zoning in the assembly of school site, activities that can be completed in the pre-planning stage, pre-planning funding programs to support school authorities in advancing projects out of a conceptual phase and determining practical next steps where applicable to address future capital need. So we're kind of in a state where um, a value scoping would really take us to the end of pre-planning, because all of the other things required in this initial planning would be complete. Um, I've been gathering the information that you need for the pre-planning session, and really moving into the planning session could be, um, quite, quite quick.
So we're asking for build funding?
Um, we have the pre-planning money.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think the next step is to, for a build. But, but not to, like, I just don't want to, I just want it to be understood that I'm not skipping a step there.
Mm-hmm.
So I think that our capital plan needs to have an ask on it for a new build in Fairview. So I would like to move that we update our capital plan to request for build or design, build and, design and build funding for a new K to twelve school in Fairview.
Once that motion is solidified, can we just hear it back?
Oh, for sure.
Yeah. Okay, so this is what I heard, that we update our capital plan to request design and build funding for a new K to twelve school.
Okay, and continue the pre-planning process?
Should we, would, should we put it in pre-planning process, or are we saying we're already in that process?
That, that part of the motion, like, that part of that sentence may be important for the public, less so for the government.
Yeah. Yeah, or, yeah. Following pre-planning. I need help, guys, I'm sorry.
No, I'm just trying to think.
Do you want that we continue our pre-planning process and update our capital plan to request the design funding?
I just, I do understand the language of that, but really, the process is, we're asking to put something on the capital plan. That continuation with pre-planning is just gonna have to be explained.
So say, if we can maybe have that in the highlights or whatever, when it's talked around that, depending on our generally focus.
Yeah. That there's, like, I do think more conversations need to happen. I'm not disputing that at all. I just think that we need to, we're gonna miss opportunity if we don't have something on our something. And then, yeah, and then, like, I mean, the next chance is in March, and it'll be anymore.
Can I talk a little bit about what happens with capital plans before they get onto the minister's desk to choose projects with us? Um, so when we submit our capital plan, uh, it goes out to the public, but the other thing that happens is, um, we enter the information onto Blims, the Oberd Education and Childcare Program, with all of the information on all of the buildings and what the capital requests are. And, um, the people in capital planning, and that's for us, Peter Burgess, um, Nabeo, I'm sorry, I don't know his last name, and, and Mika Bensby, they look at the plans, they go through the plans, and they contact the boards and say, okay, where are you at? What are you looking at? What information do you want to be included on here, um, to get? If it gets to the minister's desk, because the more information and the clearer you are in your ask, the more likely it's going to move forward. So if we change the capital plan to say that we're asking for, just my language hypothetical, a K to twelve school continuing to work through the pre-planning to, to move to the next stage, we keep doing our work, say the value scoping is done December thirty-first, and they have a budget, now that can be updated into our ask. That's information that they have a capital planning to help with, with progress and moving that, that forward. That's, that's how things work, but the timelines are to be able to get a project notice, to be able to be in that group, that may be brought to the minister for consideration. And then the minister decides which projects are gonna go ahead, if that helps, just.
Okay, do you wanna read it out one more time, please?
That we update our capital plan to request design and build funding for a new K to twelve school in Fairview.
Okay, does everybody understand the motion?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, all of those in favor of the motion? That's four. Edith, I'm, right, okay, just wanted to make sure. That's four. All those opposed? That's three. So motion is passed.
Okay. So we didn't make the motion, can we do?
No, we did not.
I thought it was not.
Um.
Is it, can we just?
Yeah, okay, I was gonna say, um, yeah, so if somebody wants to.
We have the motion to call the special board meeting.
That's it.
So not quite there. So to discuss teacher, teacher, teacher issues.
Sorry, who said September what?
Twenty-third.
Twenty-third.
Okay, all those in favor?
Sorry.
Oh, sorry.
Do I put a teacher request, or do I just put?
Just teacher.
Teacher.
Yeah, I think that's what was in the last. It was. He tried to hear each other, people? But, whatever they say.
Yeah, whatever we had on the last one.
It was teacher on the last one.
Okay, all those in favor? Or seven? Okay, um, we are sitting at three-thirty. What are we able to get through here? Um. Okay, oh, five-point-four, yes, okay, yeah, five-point fours. Um, can I just quickly poll everybody here? It's, uh, policy stuff I would love to get to today if possible, just, or just if we needed to do.
If you're talking four o'clock, we're not gonna get through them.
Yeah.
I know, I don't, I don't think. You, you folks have read it. You have a lot of questions. Everybody can just go.
Yeah.
Move second and third reading.
Well, that's what I'm wondering, like, if we can, if people are, did everyone have a good chance to go through the policies?
We still, I was gonna say, pulled them out.
Sorry?
There was quite a few items pulled.
Yeah, I know, that's what I'm trying to see, is what we can put, because if we are able to, we can add some things to our special board we need. Yeah, so that's what I'm just looking, is what we can add to that one. I'm just wondering if we needed anything more with policy, if we're good to put it, if we're all good with policy, I'm okay with putting it until the twenty-third, because then it's, it's something that's kind of quick and easy. Um, but if there's anything that we need to do now, or what needs to be put aside to, to next, or that can wait till next, uh?
I would propose we wait until next week to talk.
For policy? Okay, so, um.
I keep forgetting. Can I make a motion?
I can make a motion. Okay, I'll make a motion that we, uh, table the policy until the special board meeting on the twenty-third. Yeah. All in favor?
That's cool.
Pass. So, so, if you have a question, sorry.
Oh, I do have a question.
Okay, sorry.
So the board cast a motion to update the capital plan, so now I have to update the capital plan, so we will have to add that to the.
Yeah, and that's what I'm kind of trying to flesh out here, is to make sure that we'll add, um, that. Okay, but that one was that one first. Okay, go do it, chief.
No, I'm just thinking the twenty-third, we'd initially scheduled that day for some pretty good stuff. And I, I thought this stuff is gonna take a big chunk in the day, and it's good, it's, you know, we're talking about.
I would like that other one, hopefully, maybe like two hours tops, and then the rest of it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Very true.
Okay, okay, so where are we looking here now? So that's policy, so that's six-point-two and six, all that six-point-two stuff is moved to the twenty-third. Um, so, okay, MLA meeting, so, five, sorry.
Did you pass them?
Oh, yeah, sorry, you got seven, yeah.
Okay, sorry, I missed that.
Nope, oh, sorry. Okay, where did we say it? Five-point-four, five-point-four. Um, so, yeah, this was kind of the conversation, so we are meeting with a couple MLAs, um. That's twenty-nine, twenty-nine, trying to get all my days mixed up here. Um, and so we do have, we have the, the person that is acting for, um,
Sinclair.
Yeah, uh, acting for Sinclair, so out of, uh, Slave Lake area, and then we do have, um, Dan Williams, right? And now, those are the two that were able to come. Um, I think that personally, like, I just, just to kind of start the conversation, like we said, it is what it is with the build. We're, we're delayed a year, it's gonna get, keep going, it's not off the table, like, we're still going, we're just delayed a bit. Um, but personally, I think we really need to push and have them understand the importance and, and the safety concerns and everything else about the bathroom situation in that school. So.
Because it'll be up to two thousand twenty-eight, perhaps, before.
Yeah.
School is built.
Exactly, exactly. It's not like it's just a couple more months they have to kind of deal with in for a bit. And when we're looking at seeing, uh, it, it's small, but there's a steady increase at that school, and with everything else that's going on in that area, I, we can see that it's gonna be a steady increase. So by the time that school is built, we might have a hundred and fifty kids. They can't deal with three toilets, like, you just can't. Um, so I would definitely like that to be a pretty, kind of.
There are, uh, I do know that we, uh, did rent portable toilets one time for a function we had over at the county there, or whatever, and they were heated and, uh, had a fireplace in their garage.
Well, the government would. We, we, we had that set up. We were gonna get a trailer, like, whether it was like a, like a portable, whatever, and that was just a bathroom unit attached to the school, and we were denied it because it added square footage to the school. That's what I'm saying.
So something like that has to be overwrote.
Right?
Are we talking about discussing that with, uh?
Yeah, that's what, that's just where we're at, sorry. Um, I was just starting off to say that that's definitely one of my hard topics that I really wanna push about how important it is that we deal with this bathroom situation.
Yeah.
Sorry. Well.
And furniture equipment budget.
Yes, and the furniture equipment, because we already, we're dealing with it from that, and so it needs to be adjusted, because that's just it. We get, we get the percentage of what the, the project's approved of, but then things, inflation and everything else, it costs more, we're not getting any more money, right? So wanna push for that. Um, and it wasn't even a huge amount, I don't think, was it?
Oh, look it up. It wasn't a crazy amount.
No.
We're gonna, and we wanted to use IMR dollars. They wouldn't let us do that. So, yeah.
Well, and that's just it, like, we're, we're looking for other solutions versus just saying, give us the money, and they're not allowing us to, to do that, so. Um, so, uh, furniture and equipment and bathrooms. What other topics we have for Rivers Creek?
I, I think that that's the most important thing that we're at right now, and if those are two things that the, the MLAs can really push for, um, I think we stick to that, and we have really good reasons why, because they can advocate for that, and we're not asking for the earth, moon, and stars. We're asking for what happens.
Yeah, um, everything got figured out between the, the county and, and the, the utility lines and all that, okay, because I know that that was a hot topic before.
Well, the problem, the problem is that the county budgeted, or the MD of Opportunity budgeted for the water and sewer line project in the specific calendar year. This is taking it to the next calendar year, so this requires resolutions and other things at the, the MD level, which is not always easy. There's an election. What if the next council comes in and says, no, we're not gonna do this anymore, then, um, essentially, P River School Division could be on the hook for that.
Yeah, and there's always big, uh, nominate, a lot of nominations in there, so the, the whole board can change down to one person.
Yeah, um, okay, no, that's good to know, and we're.
Can we also make sure that Todd Lowen knows about this?
He knows. He was invited to Canada.
Yeah, yeah, even though he can't attend, can we make sure he, he receives the results of that meeting to keep him informed? Because we're gonna likely have to work on him with.
Is it?
What's going on there?
Their vote could be virtual.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, yeah.
Are you planning on coming here? Uh, well, I will already be here, because Jeff and I have a board's chair meeting.
Yeah.
Um, but.
Probably easier if we're all in, whoever can make it or whatever, we're here.
Yeah, is it easier or is it easier when we each have our own advice?
Definitely easier for me if I'm in their room with other trustees, for sure.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I think we're fine, because like I said, we'll, we'll be here, so.
Yeah. Probably an hour inside, eh? Probably wants to get an hour.
Yeah, as we'll say roughly, yeah.
You can't get an hour when they actually drive here.
Yeah.
Maybe you'll get an hour.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, so.
Those two topics were the big.
I think those are the big ones, yeah.
And then, um. If we're discussing board advocacy on the twenty third, is it impossible ask to have that document updated and then be able to shuffle that out at the same time? Oh, and by the way, here's all our other advocacy needs.
Yeah. I don't see one, no.
Please fix the funding.
Yeah, well, even if it's the old one, because I don't, yeah.
So is, is that adding the transportation one? And that, that two figures that we have, if we update that and give it to them at the same time.
Coming out of the twenty third discussion, any tweets, freshen it up and then have a.
Yeah, perfect.
I'd like to see that updated like every six months. I'm sure it'll get them.
Perfect. Okay, you think we're good on that one then? Perfect, uh, five point five, all the numbers.
Yeah, now, Madam Chair, very, very quickly, these are preliminary numbers, that's in your package there, so if you quickly look, you'll just see where we are with our numbers. Right now, we're showing a net, um, we're down, um, uh, to twenty nine hundred and eleven students, uh, as of September the eleventh. Um, of course, that can change, because like today, I have a couple of emails, students requesting transfers from the other school division into our division, and of course, it can go the other way as well. Uh, the big difference, if you look at that sheet, is the home learning. So we're down ninety eight students in the uh, home learning program. Um, that's not surprising, because we made some shifts there this past year, we no longer have a piece of learning coordinator. Uh, position as part of our restructuring last spring, and so right now, we're down ninety eight. Uh, you will see, um, we have, um, another, Falls is down by twenty right now, but you'll remember, uh, one of our teachers, Robert Robinson, made a comment about that and said we had twenty two now, but. We expect that that will wrap up in the weeks ahead, hopefully the wrapping up will occur before that end of September, magical number.
It's usually after numbers, though.
Yeah, I know, yeah, and we also have, we're down thirty seven at peace outreach right now, so hopefully that will improve. And the other one, Fairview High School is down nineteen, so, uh, now they had a bit of a bump a couple of years ago, or, or, last year when students from S T M went to, um, Fairview High. Um, it's down a little bit this, this year. Um, uh, on the other side, you'll see Grimshaw Public is up forty students, some of that would have been students transferring from, uh, Dixonville. But Manning, in Manning, uh, we have, at, at, at Max, we have twenty five, uh, numbered hot students more than we anticipated. And a large number of those are in the grade eight class, we have thirty five students in the grade eight class, so we're meeting tomorrow to discuss, uh, how we can try to alleviate some of the pressures there typically. And this is not a good news story, because if we had forty students or twenty five students more in Manning, and we had our numbers in our division increased by a hundred. We can go back to government and, and have a good chance of getting, of getting more teaching time, of more funding. But our numbers are down, but we have pockets of students distributed in a way that is causing pressure in a couple of our schools, so we won't get any increased funding. But in particular schools, we definitely have staffing needs, so that's an, an operational challenge we left to deal with. Just wanted to present those now, just to give you just a quick overview, we will share, um, more updated numbers at, after the end of the month, once we get the end of September count. We'll have, uh, the number of students that we will actually be funded on this year. So if there are no questions, um.
Can I just quickly point out, um, I was really excited to see the enrollment increase at Menno.
Yes.
Because I know there was at least, we lost at least. I think, I think, um, three of them, which transferred to Worstley because they moved.
Yeah.
And then, um, so this not, this increase is despite losing, losing some.
Right.
And some of that is families moving back to the area, but we also have a, a homeschooling family now that hasn't ever been before.
Yes. Which is great, that's good to see, and hopefully we see more, thanks for, for pointing that out, uh, trustee D.
Well, I pointed it out to her yesterday, it's because of all the good work she's doing up there in the trusty, that's what's happening.
That's it, words out. Yeah, thank you for that, so, go ahead.
I was just gonna, like, if, so you did mention, like, the forty students up at G P S, that some of them could have been, um, the Dixonville kids, and then twenty five in Manning. Um, just curious if we know out of our Dixonville kids. None of them went to Manning, okay, that's kind of what I was kind of trying to see, because I was about to say, I'm like, oh, we have forty there and twenty five, and if that was our Dixonville kids at sixty five, that was more than what was in attending the school, also, that's why I was kind of wondering.
So in Manning, I understand that there's been a significant shift in students, um.
There's some.
Yeah, from the other school, and then the students coming into the.
And there's a lot of new students, there was a lot of new students.
In the community.
Okay.
Yeah.
Cool.
But there was definitely, especially in that grade.
Yeah, really, yeah.
Yeah.
Interestingly, I saw, um, H C R D Boardman highlights that Holy Family in Grimshaw is also up, so for some reason, there's, there is a strange bump in Grimshaw that both schools are experiencing.
Well, if it's new people moving here, that's all right, like.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, exactly, yeah, okay.
Yeah, so just for each purposes, Madam Chair.
Perfect, thank you. Um, we need to, uh, receive information early or?
I'm just a little bit concerned, sorry to interrupt, Madam Chair, but. The motion for the September twenty third special meeting was for a HR hearing.
No, we do need to have another motion to add some stuff.
So, but I was just wondering if we have to amend the motion. To include other agenda items, and then the motion, did you do a motion to table?
We did do a motion to table the policy till that.
I, I think an amended motion just to include the hearing and other agenda items.
Okay, so, okay, so when we're done, should we do that? Well, we can just double check it here, are you okay with that? Is that, that's a friendly amendment, you're all right with that? Okay, so are, if everybody's good with that?
Yeah.
Okay, so if we're just gonna change, if you're just able to change it, Chris, and just read it out to us, and then if everybody's fine, then we've already voted, we're good to go.
So it's basically standing beyond.
Yeah, and I was thinking that the other motion was enough to do that, but then it's, yeah.
Still have a separate. I think we should just do a separate motion.
Oh, okay, okay.
Yeah, I'm amending that motion to include other agenda items, so that you're not, that, that item will stand, that motion will stand.
Okay.
And, um, another motion just to amend the special meeting to include other agenda items.
Are you, are you comfortable with that, because that was your motion?
Yeah, that's right.
Okay. Okay, so that's the. Okay, so that's the motion that's all on the floor, all in favor? Wait, or seven? Yeah, then it's all clear there. No, it's just to include.
Just to include other agenda items.
Other agenda items, because then every time we're tabling something, it will be a motion, so move it to that.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay.
I'm sorry, I missed who made this motion.
Uh, trustee D.
Yeah. Thank you, just.
No, thank you, no, yeah, that's good to, I know most of us are on the same page and get it, but it's nice to have it clear on paper. Okay, so that one's done, standing. Okay, standing committee, oh, we have one of those, so five point eight point one.
Yeah, Madam Chair, the, the time is of essence, we can defer that to another time, if that's what, uh. Yeah, but it is straightforward, all we're doing is suggesting that because we've made, uh, adjustments to the, uh, the, um, uh, the Labor Management Committee to meet. Uh, three times a year, that the board might want to give consideration, oh, well, actually, in this instance, it's not a big issue, because I think the L E A's on committee meets twice a year, is that correct right now? So we just wanted to sort of notice that we've, at an operations level, made adjustments to the. Labor Management Committee, in that terms of reference, because that used to, uh, the terms of reference said they would meet monthly. And that wasn't sustainable for one, so now we've said, uh, three times a year, and other times as needed, if there's an emergent matter. And many committee members and attendants were fully in favor of that, so we just wanted to, uh, basically share that with you. And it may or may not mean that there's any, uh, real major implications for our own, um, uh, terms of reference, with one caveat, I think. What we put in the, uh, in this one, and in the stack, uh, terms of reference, was that items that get brought forward to an agenda. Should be items that are matters of concern for multiple people versus a committee member bringing their own issue forward, and nobody else has that as an issue. Because what that does is it ties the organization up to have a meeting, a person has their own agenda with everybody at the table, and it's a fairly costly meeting. But they could have picked up the phone and called the supervisor, and that had resolved in, in a day, and so we put language in, in our own, uh, uh, terms of reference from, from the operations committee. And this was basically a flag to say, hey, you know, you might want to look at, uh, tweaking your own, uh, terms of reference for this committee to dump down into that one.
Okay. Um, so we're just looking to accept this?
It's just for information, so, yeah, you don't need to do anything.
And same with the other one?
The other one is the same thing, basically, um, we have, uh, the stack terms of reference, as we meet twice a year, fall and spring. For meeting, we have a fall staff, we have a November, I think it's, it's a late November meeting scheduled, ten, eleven, now. And as you know, stack and T back go hand in hand, there's a stack meeting followed by a T back meeting, and so. Uh, again, there might, uh, the stack terms of reference probably, uh, requires the board to have a look at the T back terms of reference as well, and do that, I'll pay the piece on that. I don't know who we want to, uh, actually leave for now, we can come back.
Yeah, I think after the meeting happens, we'll bring the, the terms of reference to a board meeting for approval after that.
So this is just for some.
Just for information.
Okay, okay. Okay, so I guess we'll move on from five point eight there then, if that's just for some information, and then once it gets brought to a meeting, it'll get brought back for actual approval. Uh, okay, all the six stuff is put away. Um. Standing committee items, is there anything that we need to discuss? Now. And I, I think all of it, it can kind of wait till the next meeting, because it's gonna be setting up who goes to conferences and who goes to all that stuff, so it kind of has to happen after the next meeting.
Can I just speak to six point three?
Six point three.
Yeah, the, uh, the S B A, there's a, um, learning session coming up, and it's on A I. So it's called the lunch and learn session or whatever, but it's online, and, um. The, so they've sent a Zoom link to anybody that wants to attend or whatever, but you have to register in advance for the session.
Yeah.
And, uh, so it's on charter schools within the USA, but a lot of that would reflect into our charter schools too. So if anybody, you know, I just feel that anybody that, uh, wants to attend and learn what's all happening with that, that could be forthcoming into Canada as well, so. I just think that people shouldn't be allowed to. I'll send it off to you guys if you want, I just want the board.
Yeah, and it's also a reminder too, that those lunch and learns or anything like that, those are included in our monthly honorariums. Because they're not something that the board has set up and approved that everybody can attend, or this many people can attend, if you choose to, uh, attend those, you choose on your own time, like, your own to do that. It's included in your monthly honorary. Um, I, we don't have anything coming from P S B A A, because we, there was the report that you gave last month, um, after the, and nothing's happened since, so. Um, is there anything coming up from Real Focus?
Nothing from Real Focus.
And we did it Zoom one yesterday, but, yeah.
Um.
I don't think there's anything for shattering from it. Um, we did Edwin Par and all that.
Yeah.
And, um, just think we were changing, that's the Edwin Par zone of the end game.
Yeah.
And the deadlines for all those.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, more or less just updating some of the positions.
Yeah.
I guess one comment I would have on the Edwin Par, I might thought maybe next time, maybe I missed it, but we did a meeting introduction, like, for long Sunday, didn't even realize this was Constable Sunday sitting.
Oh, yeah.
We thought the guy with the uniform was Constable Sunday, and then I seen, oh, there's police officers here.
Yeah, and I didn't even think, and I know, and he was out to lunch anyway, and he's like talking to other people and waving, and he waves, and then he's looking around, I'm like, you're over here, he's like, oh.
I, I kind of found with the. With, with the S B A Edwin Par sucker, whatever, because you have a, you're meeting the same date, you know, you do meeting, you do the Edwin Par, then back and. The meeting, and most of our people want to be gone by three o'clock, so, especially people that can rain and drive all the way, so. And sometimes the S B A have to be out there too for flights and so, it can be a rushed process.
Yeah.
But, yeah. This is what this is.
Yeah, okay, so that's that there, so I think, um, so we're looking at five two, we need to do calendar, are we?
I can be like quarter.
Okay, I was gonna say, we need to do calendar, and then I don't, if we want to poll, like, the stuff that's polled, if it's anything that's gonna require some conversation, then we'll table it. If it's something quick, then we'll go over it, but calendar, we need to do calendar.
What number is that?
Six one four.
I can be here till like four oh one.
Oh.
If you're tabling.
Well, like we said, we don't want to table too much, because we really wanted to have those hearty conversations, um, at the next meeting too, so. Um, okay, so September, where are we, we're meeting next week, so we have our, our board advocacy and governance, um. And the special board meeting, uh, so that will start at nine now, not ten, the special board meeting will start at ten, or nine, sorry. Um. So what, that's the twenty third, yeah, so then on the twenty sixth, too, who's all coming to Manning? And that starts at ten, right?
Yes, it, the ceremony starts at ten.
Ceremony's at ten, yeah. So Lori, I'm going, David's going.
So is it just the morning thing before?
Uh, no, it's about a half hour program, like, celebrating the grand opening, and then refreshments and.
And tours.
Yeah. Okay, and I know we do have, I know, hopefully we got some R S V Ps, I know there's a couple of people that talked to me the other day that other divisions are gonna come and.
Yes, there's quite a few, there's quite a few of, um, like, board chairs and superintendents who have R S V Ps.
Yeah.
I don't think I'll make that.
Don't make it. Do you think you were able to attend that, or?
Friday, this Friday?
Uh, next Friday, twenty six. You can make that one, okay. Okay, and, and I guess we'll chat, I was super late with, I'm, I'm, I'm going on our fine time, I'm hopping right with Mark, so. Um. Yeah, um, yeah, so then Jeff and I will already be here with that other one, and then, yeah, we'll be, so just, I guess, just let us know, so we make sure that everybody has a link and everybody's all good to vote, and not gonna be here for two. Um, and so then shooting reconciliation, so there will be no school Tuesday, right?
On the school Tuesday?
On the thirtieth. Yeah, yeah. Um, so then October, oh, and I guess that Monday at noon is last call for our nomination papers. Uh, Zone, uh, One meeting is on the eighth, and that's in High Prairie. Um, and I know there was a little bit of chatter around whether we were still gonna have it or not, if there was a strike, but we still need to do stuff, so I think they said that we would still have our meeting. Yeah. Um, and then it's elections, and then whoever's back on, there'll be. Never know.
I was wondering if, um, do you tell nominees, like, that, what the setup is?
I was gonna say, it's on them with. Right?
Or that they have orientation the next day?
After nomination day, I'll contact.
Oh, you contact.
Not, sorry, not, yeah, after nomination day, I will contact them and let them all know.
Okay.
What will happen, and that will be their.
Oh, maybe, okay, maybe it's the town one, I was gonna say, somewhere I saw it had all the dates, like, lined right up, so people, if they were running, they knew you had to be available for these days.
So if on, on election day, how do you know you won or?
Yeah.
You pace up and down.
I went to bed.
We used to, as a, uh, for counselors or whatever, we used to gather at the county office, and then they had a board, and they would, uh, election offices would call in. They would keep track of your scores or whatever.
And did they pop champagne? Just like.
There's losers.
Yeah, I was gonna say, uh.
Unless you're a claim, then you.
Yeah, and then if you're, yeah, if there's nobody in your ward on next Monday, then. Yeah, so then there will be the orientation for the two days, um, that's also another thing that will be on our agenda. Um, that's also another thing that will be on our agenda for our, our other senior governance meeting is kind of how we're gonna structure that now. Um, especially after some of us have been here a number of years, we can kind of see what works and what doesn't work, and what we need to make sure people are aware of right from day one. And then there will be the organizational meeting and the regular board meeting on the twenty-third of October.
And we still make this one agenda?
I guess, yeah, we'll make the agenda that whoever's gonna have to deal with. I don't know.
Yes, then we'll have to just work that, I mean, because the election.
It's my mind that you could have like, no one has.
Yeah. We worked through it. We worked through it.
That's what it was like when you came here.
Terrifying.
No, there was. Oh, no, I was gonna say, no, when.
There was Robin, Lori, Crystal.
Delena, yeah, when we came in, there was two new, Darren and Dionne, uh, uh, Delena were the only two returning.
One of you is back.
Yes.
So, yeah.
Yeah, well, we'll say, um, again, with the calendar, if it's okay, I, we wanted to just bring up the conversation, and we, we might actually have to have that more on Monday, but the reason why I pulled the, the trustee work plan is throughout the policy committee, we were having some chatter about a lot of times the trustee work plan gets overlooked and we don't always know what's coming up the next month. That uh, it would be nicer if maybe we'll look at that policy and bring it forward to that, we're gonna change it to add that the trustee work plan is not part of the consent agenda, it's added down with the calendar. So it's just more regular, like we're talking about, okay, what's happening next month, what's going on. Um, right now, it really like, everything could be all up in the air next month, so we don't know, but um, moving forward, so I think we will put that into that policy and bring that policy forward on um, next uh, next Tuesday, uh, so that we can go through some of that stuff. Uh, because we will have, we got a bunch of policy stuff that we will do, but a lot of it is super quick, yeah, like it'll be, even some of the new stuff, it will be quick. Um, should I talk about this now, just so that people have heads up? Okay, so there is, with the policy that we, that I did table, um, just so that people can have some thought on that, so policy twenty-two, there is a way that we might not actually have to add it as another policy that we could add it into an existing policy and then just have a statement that says the superintendent is in charge of what, what did we say earlier about all ministerial um, orders and, and whatever. And then it just covers for whatever the government decides to throw at us, we don't have to make a new policy every time. It's just, this is what we have to do, that is the superintendent's job to make sure we're following all the government things, right?
I, Madam Chair, I think that would be really helpful because we've already seen a ministerial order be amended.
Exactly.
Going forward, if that's embedded in policy, you're at a step if that happens.
Exactly, so this way we don't have to change our policy every other month when the government changes something, right? Because we do see that policy, it's at least a two month process, right? You got your first meeting reading, then it goes out. So there is, uh, maybe we'll email this out because there actually is a way that we can work around that and we could suspend our gu- what governing rules for a time and pass three readings of a policy in one sitting. If it's something like that and we all have to agree to it. So I'll send this out just so everybody can have the thoughts on it, just so that we can get some of this done in a meeting versus another board and they might not understand and it could be all over the place. So that was why policy was gonna have a little bit of a conversation, so I'll send that out to everybody just so that they have it and they can understand what we're looking at. Um, and then we'll, we'll have that discussion with the, because yeah, when we created this policy twenty-two on the information that A S B A sent us, they've already changed the ministerial order since then. So now already we could be halfway through approving a policy and then it's obsolete now.
Yeah, and I'm sure if I could slip in one other quick comment, the ministers also said it doesn't have to be a policy, an administrative procedure satisfies a requirement, but I think it's wise for the board to either put it under the role of the superintendent or even in their own, own policy two under section five, board superintendent relations, provide superintendent clear for direction, including direction to ensure compliance with government legislation, ministerial orders, and you're sat, you, forever today, you're, you're solid on.
Yeah.
And then it comes up, you hold your superintendent accountable for
Yeah.
having an administrative procedure that aren't.
Absolutely, yeah. Um, okay, so now I just kind of want to tick off some of my things, so I had pulled two point six. I already addressed what we were doing with that, so I'm gonna make a motion to accept two point six for information. That was the trustee work plan. Um, all in favor? We are six, okay, so that's off.
We're six.
No, no, sorry, two point six, that was my.
Right.
Yeah.
Um, yeah, sorry, I said six, no, I meant, sorry. Um, okay, so now we had two point one point two and two point three point one and two point seven point one that was pulled by trustee Dion. Is there anything that we need to discuss right now, or can we table those three topics until the next?
No, I think we have just most of them, so, but we had, was this one was the record?
That, yeah, that was that meeting.
Yeah, we, we talked in camera, we covered most of it, even the uh.
Okay.
The, the superintendent's report was also, it was an item in it referring to that, item number six.
Okay.
You know, uh, about this, this is a board meeting, so we, we.
So are you okay with approving or, uh, moving for those two to be accepted for information?
Yeah.
Okay, so that's two point one, point two and two point three point one be accepted for information.
Two point three point one is a financial report.
Oh, sorry.
The financial report is something else.
Okay, so that's, so it's the two point seven, sorry, sorry, Chris, two point one point two and two point seven point one.
Yeah.
Oh, two point, two.
Am I right?
Yeah. Sorry, I called people, sorry.
Yeah. Okay, so we're moving for those two for information. All in favor?
Seven.
Okay, Lisa, you had two point two, now or later?
I think it's a bit of a discussion.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, so we're gonna. Do the thing.
I make a motion to table that to our special. On September twenty.
Okay. Two point two.
Okay. Is that me doing my turn?
Yeah. All in favor? We are seven.
Do you vote apart at four o'clock?
I know, I did. Okay, so then two point seven point one. Sorry, no, two point three point one.
Yeah, two point three point.
That's the one that you have, uh, you have.
Financial report.
Okay. So. Quick questions, you think?
Yes, a quick question, so.
Okay.
The, the, the item on this financial report, are they pre-formatted or we can probably segregate? The ball and system administration of cost is a way we can show to the defined line items.
Um, the presentation that you get monthly, um, is the same presentation that goes to Alberta Education, and there's not an easy way to do that, but quarterly, because now quarterly I'm going to bring an advanced uh, report with variance analysis on it, and I can do it on that report if that suits the board.
Every three months, right? Every three months, exactly, so, so we got, we have board and administer some items, itemized, that's perfect.
That works, okay. So it, oh, sorry.
And I just had a comment, congratulations. But, you know, end of the year, this is looking like.
This, can I just put a disclaimer on this?
It's looking positive, isn't it?
It looks really great right now, um, this is if we were doing a cash accounting with no accruals. Um, this might be where we are, but this number will definitely change by the audit. So I, I just want you all to, yeah, to know that.
Well, I'm still standing by my congratulations.
Thank you, thank you. Um, I'm always leery of giving this report just because once we do all our year-end accounting, um, the number changes for various different reasons, and when we um, review the financial statements in November, with everybody who will be around the table in November, um, all of those items will be explained.
Yeah, for sure.
Just uh, one more comment on the two point three point one. Through all of our board meetings, there's time to, we come up and talk about things that are gonna be a little expensive or what are we gonna do? Could the financial report not be in the consent agenda? Could it be someplace else? Not that we have to deal with it every time, but if we know we've got things coming out, we have to pull it and then it goes right to the back end of the whole day and we don't talk about it until after we've talked about the stuff we're concerned about. You know, if we just had it.
Yeah, as, as.
On the, on the agenda, so that when we're going through it, if we have something that's gonna cost a little bit of money or we're worried about it, we can kind of take a look at that then and talk about it rather than pulling it and then not seeing it until after we're ready to adjourn or more so. I'm just wondering.
Can we do that into that policy that I'm moving that other consent?
I, I think that might work because if it's a regular, I'd say is that we're gonna talk about it every meeting and then that's where that quarterly report would be as well, because I'm gonna be making comments on the financial statements every month, so then we won't have that quarterly and it'll change as soon as.
Yeah, and not that we're gonna get in depth with it every month, it's just i- if we want to, we don't have to wait till a meeting's over to do it.
Yeah.
But it might be good for them to see it at the end of time.
Yeah. Okay, okay, I mean, note to that, so for good, trustee Dion pulled that, right? Do you want to move for information? Okay, all in favor? Seven, okay.
What am I operating like this?
No, right? Be exhausted. Um, okay, so then we just have this one, two point two that is moved to the next meeting. Other than that.
So we're doing policy two point two.
I, no, I removed that for sure, that was the, the, the trustee work plan.
Policy and two point two.
Yeah, so that's all we have.
And the hearing.
And the hearing, yeah. Okay, cool. Um, so before we adjourn, and, oh, why, we didn't have the capital plan.
Oh, crap, I thought we did with the other one.
No, we didn't.
You amended the motion?
No, we didn't.
You amended the capital plan, but you didn't say that you were gonna bring it to a meeting on September.
But the amendment motion said you would add like other items.
Yes.